I will call to order the meeting of the Planning Commission for Wednesday, February 5th, 2020. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Jason, would you please lead us?
Please rise and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gabriel, could you call the roll, please?
Yes, Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Kaczynski?
Here.
Commissioner Tally?
Here.
Commissioner Wu?
Here.
Chair Pro-Tam Crandall?
Here.
Vice Chair Blackwell?
Here.
And Chair Brullen?
Here. Item four, Special Orders of Business, I'm going to delay that until after our minutes. So, the next item is our minutes. We have two sets, the study session from December 18th and the regular Planning Commission meeting from December 18th.
I move you approve the study session minutes.
Okay, there's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Don has motion, Chris is the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstained.
And one abstention from Commissioner Wu, so that is 6-0-1.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting.
Second.
Motion by Jason, second by Bart, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Passes 7-0. All right, back to Special Orders of Business. I think Jason had an announcement for us.
Yeah, I just wanted to let everybody know that I, earlier today, I communicated with the mayor and submitted my resignation from the Planning Commission. Unfortunately, as you all know, I have been coaching my son's baseball team and we have practices for this season that are going to be on Wednesdays. My term is up in June, so I kind of wanted to be able to enjoy what probably will be the last year of coaching without having to worry about missing meetings here and not being responsible to this position. So, I just want to take the opportunity to thank everybody on the commission, my fellow commissioners. You've made a non-architect or planner feel very welcome here, so thank you. Don, thanks for humoring me and Bart and Jim as well. I really appreciate it. I've had a lot of fun and have the utmost respect for the staff. Gabriel and Cecilia, I spoke with her earlier today and said thank you and obviously to all of our planners that we have, I mean, you guys make this work. We get to sit up here and sometimes I know they were, you know, questions that probably were not quite on point, but thanks for humorin' me and thank you for everything. I enjoyed it. So, four years and I look forward to being able to watch you from either out there or online and I know that everything will proceed very well, so thank you very much.
We will miss you. I thought you brought a unique, you know, legal aspect to the whole Planning Commission and I valued your input.
Thank you, thank you. I just like to make, you know, Mel looks stuff up over there. It was fun.
Well, Jason, I'm sorry to hear about that and I think you are, I'm very pleased and impressed by your critical thinking and forthright comments and I think it's very important for the Planning Commission to have input like yours. I hope you can keep involved.
Thank you very much and I will be happy to be involved to the extent that it's wanted and/or I have some time, so thank you all. I really count you all as friends, so thank you. It was much more than just coming here on our meeting nights, so.
That's your take off some ladies.
Exactly, exactly. I, if you'll excuse me, I do have a practice that I need to go to. Thank you, thank you, and thank you again. Hey, thank you.
Thank you for your service, Jason. I, for myself, I, one of the pleasures of being a Planning Commissioner is when you can help to change someone's mind and someone can help change your mind through their intelligence and that's, I feel like that's been a lot of our interaction, so I'm grateful for it, so good luck.
Thank you, thank you, everybody. Please keep in touch and I miss y'all.
Okay.
I will turn this in for the last time.
So, we will move on to our oral and written communications. Members of the public may address the Commission on matters of public interest which pertain to the city and are not otherwise on the agenda. If you wish to speak, please step forward to the microphone and if you desire, state your name and/or city of residence for the record and make your presentation, make your presentations. Please limit your presentations to three minutes. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak to something that is not on the agenda tonight? Seeing no one, we will close oral and communications. Item seven, consent calendar, we have nothing on the consent. Item eight, public hearings, 8A, general plan amendment 20-011, roadway system map.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners, Christopher Wright, associate planner. This city initiated general plan amendment to update a roadway systems map in our mobility element. The map is, it's an important component of being consistent with the master plan of arterial highways. It's administered by, I guess they don't have power.
Oh, I can't get on.
Should I start over? Can you hear me?
You can hear me.
Okay.
Yeah, it sounds a little bit faint, but.
Okay.
Okay, I guess I'll start over. So, this is a city-initiated general plan amendment for a map, to update a map in our mobility element so that the city is, roadway system map is consistent with the master plan of arterial highways. That's administered by the Orange County Transportation Authority. So, that's called the MPAH. That MPAH is a roadway system map that's used by the different jurisdictions in Orange County to coordinate roadway development. That map is tied to transportation funding, so the city needs to have a general plan roadway system map that's consistent with that MPAH to be eligible for funding. The city has approved several roadway projects, of which the Planning Commission has reviewed previously, that are consistent with the policies in the general plan for complete streets. So, that, that means mostly restriping some roadways to allow for the roads to be improved there, the striping for different users, so bikeways, improving bikeway opportunities and also maintaining the level of service on our roadway system. So, I'm going to show you the changes that are proposed here and there's really four types of changes. So, the red is primary classification to major, that's on Camino de los Maris. The secondary classification to primary, and those are the yellow lines. Secondary to collector, whether divided collector or just collectors, those are the blue lines. And then the green lines are roadways that were shown as planned, but they've actually been completed. So, with that, that concludes my presentation.
Could you give us a, just a very quick primer on the definitions between secondary, collector, primary, and major?
There is a different number of lanes that are identified in the general plan. I can go by what's on our map here. So, the major is six lanes divided, primary is four lanes divided, secondary is four lanes undivided, divided collector is two lanes divided.
Okay, and that's, and that's the only, just the number of lanes? It's not, I mean, is there a little bit more formal definition in terms of what their function is and things like that or just the number of lanes?
The number of lanes and the amount of volume that those roadways could accommodate based upon the number of lanes.
Okay, thanks.
Chris, can you simply show us the master plan of arterial highway on the screen?
I don't have it as a slide. We could get it on the screen if we need to, but.
Okay. I got a few questions. I looked up the MPAH from OCTA. There are two notable changes I'd like to ask you about and they're basically the same essence. Camino de los Maris and Camino del Rio, they're designated as a secondary arterial highway with four lanes undivided. With the exception of the first segment that's near Interstate 5 of Camino de los Maris, we've reconfigured or built these two roads in a variety of configurations. For example, recently we viewed a roundabout at Camino del Rio. We also changed a part of the road into two lane divided. So, that, so as you propose, those road segments dropped from secondary arterial highway to collector divided. Is OCTA going to consider that acceptable deviation from their MPAH or are they going to update their MPAH to reflect what we have here?
Yes, so they have, OCTA has given us an interim or a conditional approval to have inconsistencies with the MPAH. This is necessary for the city to update the general plan to be consistent with the projects that the city has approved. The changes that are shown here would make its way into the MPAH.
So, they're going to revise the MPAH?
Yes.
To reflect those changes?
Correct.
And also on the North Camino Real, it was four lanes, now it's changed to two lanes. So, they're okay with those?
Yes, the changes are to reflect projects that the city has approved, roadway projects.
And will still be considered consistent because MPAH will be revised to be same as this?
Yes, that's the objective of this project, to make sure that the city's general plan map and the projects that have been approved by the city are consistent with the master plan of arterial highways. That is what this is aiming to achieve.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, hey, Chris. Just a question on the segment of La Pata between Pico and Hermosa. I'm curious to know why we've got, we go from four to six to four on our primary. That segment of La Pata is listed as a six lane, whereas it's four on either side. I'm wondering why we have that, just that small section?
I would need our Public Works Director to answer that question. I can't answer that.
Actually, initially, La Pata was going to be six lanes all the way through to Ortega, but it got so expensive that they tailored it back to two lanes on our side and three lanes southbound from Ortega to the high school at San Juan, just so people can get there in the morning. But that's four miles of highway was $80 million that we did build and six lanes was just pretty prohibitive. Maybe he can.
Is that accurate?
Engineer can.
Okay.
So, we built that one section at six and then the reality of the terrain and the cost of moving dirt and what federal funding we could get made the shoe fit better with just two lanes each way going all over the hill to San Juan.
Okay, well, I'm just.
So, I just want to make sure, so I just want to make sure our Public Works Department concurs with our encyclopedia, Brown?
Yes. So, just wondering if there would be any incentive for us to widen the shoulders or the greenscape and reduce it back to four lanes so there's consistency, continuity all the way through? And it would also potentially slow traffic because I've noticed that folks get going pretty quick down that hill. Is that something that we could explore? Is that a Public Works?
Yeah, that's outside of my scope.
When you start jackhammering curb cutout, it gets really expensive.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners, Tom Bonnigat, Public Works Director. The short answer is yes, it's something we can always explore. We just did some street work in that section not too long ago and we actually added buffered bike lanes. It's, it can be looked at, but that street segment's not going to be due for any work anytime soon when we get down to that road again. Yes, it can be looked at, just like we do any other street, to see how we can improve it, make it safer, reduce speeds and whatnot, but right now, we're probably good for five years or so on that segment because we just overlaid it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Don, did you have something?
I know, I was just going to say that any time you start having to pull lanes down, you're going to probably do it with paint, jackhammers and take curves out, then you get really expensive. That's why with the intersection, the intersection analysis, expansion of our general plan, that's all I can say. Any more questions? I'll make a motion.
Okay, it's public hearing items, so let me, I don't see any more questions for staff at the moment, so I will open the public hearing and see if we've got any cards.
No, sir.
We have no cards, so I will close the public hearing and I will open it up to Planning Commission discussion or motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution PC 20-001. A resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of San Clemente, California recommending the city council approve general plan amendment 20-011. Roadway system map update to update roadway classifications for consistency with the Orange County master plan of arterial highways.
Second.
Motion by Don, second by Bart, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay. That is the end of our public hearings. We'll move on to new business. The first item is the ongoing Mills Act inspection. Mr. Lightfoot?
Okay. Good evening, Commissioners. We're going to be looking at a potential fee for the ongoing Mills Act program. So, I'll walk through real quick the background of the program, kind of what our current practices are and what a potential deviation moving forward could look like. So, the Mills Act is, was, originates out of state legislation to incentivize the preservation of historic properties. It's a tax incentive to encourage those property owners to maintain their properties. San Clemente, by ordinance, began participating in that program in 1997. Any property on our designated structures list is eligible for participation in that program. Any city can set up different requirements of what meets or what is an eligible property and for us, it's just if you are on that designated historic structures list. The Mills Act is a 10-year contract that auto-renews every year, meaning that if at any point the city or the property owner wants to end that contract, that begins the 10-year wind down. There is an initial inspection required as a part of the application process. The state-enabling legislation does require five-year inspections thereafter. So, not a whole lot of information on this fee, but just a quick overview right now based off of the staff time that was shown in the 2007, 2008 study. The current rates pan out to about $1,800 of staff time that goes from initial application through site inspection through design review and then ultimately to city council and then recording that document. Recently, we've been having a consultant assist in that process and the consultant fees come to around $550 per inspection. Currently, we assess just an application fee, which is $353. City council was aware of the significant subsidy in this program and chose, back in 2009 when they did a review, not to raise that $353 fee at the time largely because they didn't want to increase a barrier to entry for properties to participate in the Mills Act program. I did throw in a comment there at the bottom right of this screen that there's quite the range, it really depends on the valuation of the property, but the first-year savings range between $4,000 and $10,000. Most of the ones that I've done in the last couple of years are in the $7,000 to $8,000 range for their first-year savings. The current process, the image on the right is really not anything you need to read, it's just an example, but in 2009, the staff implemented a procedure to send out mailers to everyone that was on the program, but that, from what I can tell, only lasted for a couple of years. I think there were issues in getting responses back and it ended up being much more time-intensive tracking down responses than they initially intended. So, that evolved into an email follow-up, which is somewhat what I inherited, was a procedure of getting email responses from property owners with attached photos that show like, oh, look, I painted this portion that was a part of my task list. And so, there's a log that we maintain in the planning division that checks off boxes as property owners are doing that. And while that does help to check off those initial tasks, it doesn't give staff the ability to look at things in person and maybe even larger than that, it does kind of confine our task list to that initial 10-year period. So, we have quite a few properties now that we've had a program in place for 20 years, 20-plus years, that have been beyond their 10-year timeline for a while and there's been no follow-up inspections at those properties to see if there is any ongoing maintenance issues at them. So, a recommended process, again, based off of the state standard, is that we do implement a consistent five-year inspection and do those in batches. That's kind of how we've approached the applications recently where we collect applications and with the consultant's assistance, have a full day of visiting properties and doing those inspections. And we have had comments from especially the Historical Society being supportive of having the extra input from a consultant. Again, those consultant services range around $500 per inspection, so staff is recommending to continue utilizing a consultant for those ongoing inspections, those ongoing required inspections, which would entail establishing a fee of about $500 per inspection to cover that additional cost. So, staff's proposal is not necessarily to remove the subsidy, but to implement some form of a fee to cover at a minimum the expenses of having the consultant services. Again, you don't need to read this form, this is just a form that is in one of your attachments that shows a typical follow-through inspection that is done by a consultant, so they'll have a checklist of certain things that they're looking for while they're on the property. And after that inspection, if it's a 10-year inspection, for instance, they may make comments on whether some of the original tasks were completed, were partially completed, but there's pieces that need, you know, to be modified in some way. And they'll also make notes if there's something that is a new issue, like if there's some new landscaping issue that could be causing damage to the structure, then they'll make notes of that in that inspection form. So, for some of the items to consider would be broadly whether an inspection fee is something that the Planning Commission thinks is appropriate for San Clemente, whether the proposed fee of about $500 per inspection is something that's reasonable. And then as far as implementing potentially this fee, whether the Planning Commission thinks that an annual levy of that fee would be preferable or a fee due upon inspection. So, every year, being assessed a smaller portion or the full portion due upon the inspection. And then finally, just what, if you would have any recommendations of an equitable way of beginning the process of assessing this fee. Again, we have some properties who are beyond a five-year and 10-year and maybe are 20 years into the program now that have not had an inspection along the way, so if you have specific thoughts or recommendations on the best way to kind of get them back onto track, that would be some feedback I'd like to get. So, that kind of wraps up what I'm presenting and I'll just transition into discussion and I'll be taking notes.
Okay, Bart?
Yeah, Mel, existing Mills Act people have a contract with the city. Can we put additional fees against those contracts?
Or will this only be for new applications?
I believe this is for all contracts in the city. And I'm assuming those contracts, having not seen them, have language that would permit these types of fees, because fees like this are imposed pursuant to action that is beyond the contract and it's simply cost recovery. So, my assumption, having not looked at those contracts, is that there will be no problem with that.
Okay, and it's only once every five years? Okay, and it's only once every five years?
Correct. That's.
An annual would be just building up a fund until five years is paid, so 100 bucks a year?
Correct.
Or 500 one time.
Or a 500 B loan.
Does the initial, I'm sorry.
Bart, do you have more questions?
No, I'm sorry.
Don, go ahead.
Does the initial application fee cover the cost of the initial inspection right now? Are you covered in that regard?
No, it doesn't currently. So if I, if I flip back, I'll provide a little bit of clarity. So when this assessment was done back in 2007, 2008, the, the fee was just over $1,600 off of staff time. At that point, there was no input from a consultant. So the $1,600 was the amount of staff time that went into the inspection, the application, design review, and city council review. So that's kind of the lump of everything and the only fee collected was 353.
So it's costing you $1,800, not counting an inspection?
Correct. So city council consciously chose to subsidize the remaining nearly.
You're only, you're only charging people $353 for the entire process. Okay. No, I think, so you're only asking for the $500 for the consultant inspection right now. Is that correct?
Correct. A fee in that range, yes.
So addressing, you didn't agendize tonight the actual true cost of getting these people on the program, really. You didn't expect that? Or you consider, consider you were going to continue to subsidize it or what was your, what is community development's policy or position on this?
Sure. So I wasn't looking to deviate from the past policy, if that's the recommendation. I'm certainly happy to include that in the report that moves forward to city council. My, my thought was in evaluating the past consideration of the fee, that the primary reason that they did not increase the fee and that they maintained the subsidy was to keep a low barrier to entry so that people could participate without having high upfront costs. And so my thought in maintaining that lower initial fee, but then having the recurring fee afterwards is, is for that reason, that there's still a low entry and they would already be seeing savings from their, their tax benefit before there's an expectation to contribute an additional inspection fee.
One additional follow-up, I may, so during the application process, do you get, excuse me, a heads-up, a rough order of magnitude estimate of their tax savings while they're in the pre-application process? Or do you wait for quite a while before you can give them a, not an exact number, but a, a rough number?
Yeah, so during the application process, in the past, we'd asked the homeowners to provide like what their estimate is. The math's somewhat complicated, so I just take care of that with the assessor now, working with them.
It's not a, it's not a simple formula.
It's not a simple formula, but it does come to, again, typically in that range of most common between $6,000 and $8,000 savings if it's a new purchase. So if they've owned the property for a long time, the difference obviously between their Prop 13 value is going to be smaller. But we communicate that potential tax savings to them during the application and then we record that document with the county by the end of the year. But if someone applied and was approved today, that still would not go into effect until 2021. So the following year is when those savings are first, first begin to be realized.
The point I was trying to make here is that the applicant has a fairly good idea he's going to get for a new property purchase, six or $7,000 per year initial, some range, tax savings. So the point I'm trying to make is that would make it amenable if we were to in fact increase the application fee, the cost of getting into the program, saying, okay, we're at least break even or slightly not lose so much money for city staff to getting you on the program. But even still, we know upfront very early before you sign into it, you're going to, you know, save $6,000 to $7,000 in property taxes. So I, that's that trade-off point I was trying to, the thread I was trying to pull here is there, he's only asking for the reoccurring inspection cost, but we really should try to readdress the initial cost of getting into the program, I, I think. So that they're, yeah, make it affordable to get in, but at the same token, make sure the staff time is somewhat close to a break even for the initial getting into the program. That's all the point I'm trying to pull on.
Okay. Michael, questions?
Yes, thank you. Hi, Jonathan. I, along those lines, inspections are done every five years. So, you know, we have, we're talking about a $500 inspection fee, which is about 100 bucks a year, which is still less than many cities. Some are doing annual inspections, 200 or more every year. Some have no, no inspection at all. How are we, what are we doing in terms of compliance and penalty if that can gets kicked? And I've seen, since I've been up here, I've seen a few that have come through and were looking at the record and gosh, they were supposed to do X, Y, Z way back when and they never did. And then, you know, all these years later, we're looking at it and we're trying to correct it at that time. So what are, what are we doing? What measures are in place to, to avoid that? Are there any? And is that something that could be like a pay-based penalty?
Yeah. Yeah. So I think that the answer to that is that we have measures built into the contract from the beginning that give us the, the tools that we would need to address that. I think that also moving into this direction of having a concrete five-year inspection puts us in a place where we're having a concrete 10-year inspection where we can have a solid paper trail to compare what was your initial task and, and is that, has that task been completed and is the property generally in good condition? And that would put us in a better position to make any evaluations if there is a need to take one of two paths, either a non-renewal or a cancellation. I'll talk about that in a second. But right now, I, I think we're in a spot where portions of the, the contract or portions of the task lists are complete and, and there's not as good of a paper trail or photo documentation, et cetera, after the fact to, to make good decisions at the end of 10 years about which of those paths we would take if we wanted to. And to explain those two paths, a non-renewal is just when the city says, you know, we're not interested in like harshly penalizing you, but we don't think that you're meeting the spirit of the Mills Act. And so when we say we want a non-renewal, we want to non-renew, same thing as if they want to non-renew, it's a 10-year horizon. So it like gradually fades them back to the standard tax rate. If there's like kind of gross negligence, then that's something that we would do cancellation. That's also explicitly within the contract and there's a 12 and a half percent penalty of the value of their property. So that's a very serious situation and certainly we would be involving, staff would not make that decision on our own if there was a situation like that.
Okay. So just to button up my question. So is this a situation where we involve code compliance? Say, I mean, if it's maybe a month in, permits have been issued, the property has, has been improved to some degree, but not completely, is that something that a neighbor could pick up the phone and just say, hey, look, I, I understand that there was some obligation by the property owner that wasn't met? And would code compliance then be contacted and deployed?
As far as I know, that, we haven't done that yet, but yes, I think that that would be an appropriate route and probably a, a good route to take as kind of a, an in-between before escalating to a 12% penalty on the value of your property. But I defer to Gabriel on kind of administratively how the, the division would handle that.
Zen? Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just going to mention, chairman commissioners, that's, that's probably what we would do. We've had some Mills Act properties that were out of compliance with code, not with respect to their historic preservation agreement, but in violation of other code requirements in the city. And so we've actually referred back to their agreement and told them that they need to comply with the municipal code. And if they're out of compliance, then code compliance does cite or notify the property owner. And so if they don't resolve that code compliance issue, then that could lead to, you know, cancellation of the agreement.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Zen?
To continue that discussion, but that's only in case if there's a code violation. The mere not holding their end of the deal, that's not a code violation per se. That's a violation of, of the contract obligation. So, so Mel, is that going to be resolved in court, like a civil lawsuit thing?
Well, I doubt the, that, that we would go after a, a property owner for that. So it would be resolved maybe with code, but more likely with, with the management of the city and the property owner through some kind of negotiation. I doubt the city's going to go after a property owner in court based on the Mills Act contract.
But in the past, we never enforced any fee.
Have we? I'm not, I mean, I haven't seen it since I've been here and I don't know if there's a record to show that if we've contacted a property owner for non-compliance within agreement. And I don't know, Jonathan, if you have seen any record of that.
I have seen a record of communication regarding non-compliance and, and that was the community development director communicate. It escalated to that level where the community development director was communicating with the property owner, but I'm not, I don't know off the top of my head what type of code enforcement action was involved.
So, so the homeowner, let's say in the worst case, so far, a city can cancel that agreement. The homeowner will get the tax relief for 10 years and then walk away. That's the current situation. Is it?
If it's canceled, they get a 12% penalty.
Yeah, so if you could clarify the question, could you repeat the question for me?
If, if the agreement is canceled, are they going to pay a penalty?
Correct, yes. A penalty of 12% of the property value. So if they purchased the property for $800,000, they're looking at about a $100,000 property.
Okay. And it can be canceled by the city because of the non-compliance?
Correct. And obviously, we would want to have a very clear administrative record if we're going to take that type of action.
In the agreement, is there any condition that the owner needs to keep? And for a lot of historical structure, there's a condition, classification. Larry may help me on that. I think there's a three D or five, whatever. It's a combination of a number and a letter. Is there any condition that the homeowner needs to not to let that classification drop?
There's not a specific tie to that classification, but also that classification, so that ties to a few different things. So whether it's eligible as a district, whether it's eligible as an individual contributor. So, so that classification isn't just a tiering of like the quality of, of the property individually. So we haven't directly tied that classification to the Mills Act contract.
Okay. Neither is any condition to, to restrict the homeowner to expand the, the existing historic structure substantially. No, no additional restriction on that?
There's, there's not something, there's no language directly tied to that. There has been a discussion in the past, I know that city council regarding some projects did think that the addition was inappropriately sized, but they said that that was something that should be evaluated more through the cultural heritage permit process than the Mills Act process. However, the Mills Act, if you are within the Mills Act program already, I think that's something that you as the cultural heritage board would take into consideration, that the goal of that program is to maintain the property in as close to a original historic position as possible. But there's flexibility within that. So that's where you use your discretion.
The city provides incentive to, to increase the participation of this historic property preservation agreement. Can you tell me about the effectiveness of this incentive?
To subsidize? It's, it's difficult for me to say because I don't often get communication from people who choose not to apply or choose to withdraw. But I, I would concur with Don's sentiment that there is known to be substantial tax savings associated with the Mills Act. And so we do regularly at the planning division get contacted by both real estate agents and people who are considering buying properties, who want to know, is it eligible? Because, you know, that plays a role in their decision because it is definitely an incentive for property owners.
Do you see more participants to be someone who just acquired the historic structure? Or do you see people who is a long-term resident of that property come to you to ask for that agreement?
Certainly, if they just acquired the property. That's 90% of our applicants are people who just acquired the property.
Okay. Yeah, that, that makes sense, given the tax saving. Because if you're a long-term one, your property tax basis is probably pretty low and there's not much tax saving.
Exactly.
For having that.
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
Chris, questions?
Yeah, Jonathan, I have a quick question. There are over 800 existing Mills Act contracts in the city right now?
No, not in San Clemente. That, that was, I think, referencing Los Angeles. There was a figure about 800 in the attachment. We have just over 80. We're approaching 90 with the most recent contracts approved.
And how are we in line with some of these other municipalities as far as our application fees and inspection fees?
Yeah, so if everyone wants to switch back to the GPA report, so we can reference that together. It's page four of that report. And what they attempted to do here is break down differences, cities charge different fees, right? Every, a part of the enabling legislation is that every city can tailor the program to fit what they think is appropriate. So a lot of, almost every city has an application fee, but then there's some cities that have a processing fee. So application is just to submit is a fee. And then some will have a processing that is if you go to a hearing, if you make it that far to a hearing, then we charge this additional fee. And then some cities do charge the periodic inspection fee, but not all of them charge the same fees. As far as where do we fall in comparison, you can see there's a major difference within this sheet. So we, we go all the way from some cities who charge no fees, but, you know, I, I think that there is also a difference in philosophy where in those instances, there's not really a, a strong push for preservation, frankly, of the properties. And there's not follow-through by the city at, at any level to ensure that those properties are being preserved. And then you have all the way up to Los Angeles that's charging essentially a $2,000 recurring inspection fee in addition to a initial application fee that is, I believe, a couple thousand dollars, or $1,400 as, oh, no, it is, it's a processing fee of $2,800. So, so they're charging over $3,000 just to get through the first year of processing and then 2,000 every five years. So that's the high end, obviously, but we have quite the range. So the Mills Act really is intended to be tailored to every city. So it's up to us to look at like what's our cost and what's the balance of recovery versus subsidy that we think is appropriate to achieve our end goal of, of maintaining these properties in the way that we want them to be maintained.
The time on the application, $1,800, is that the application, is that the processing of that application by the staff, right?
Correct.
So that would typically fall under the processing fees here in this, after it's been approved?
Correct, yeah.
Would it make more sense to follow this model? Have a lower application fee and then once it's approved, have a larger processing fee?
So, you know, I listed this here as an application fee because that's how we, we list it within our fee schedule, but our procedures, actually, we don't collect that fee until after it's been processed.
Oh, okay.
So the timeline, actually, you can submit an application to our division for, for no cost and it's not until city council reviews that application that year do that fee.
Thank you.
I've got a couple of questions for you. One is, do we know currently if there's anyone avoiding getting a Mills Act contract because it's too expensive? If you call in and say, oh gee, I'd love to do that, but $353 is just out of my price range?
Yeah, no, I, I haven't gotten that feedback. I have had some people give feedback of concerns about just entering into a contract that has the 12% cancellation. So some people who have been a little bit nervous about that caveat within the contract and some people who have been nervous about the amount of, you know, updates to their property that are going to be needed.
And is that 12% something that we've declared or is that state mandate?
State standard.
Okay, so they're going to have that.
That's assessed valuation, all right.
Another question too, and we've been hearing that with the newer batches of Mills Act, there tends to be like a seismic retrofitting requirement on it. I know it's a little bit outside the lines of this, but since we're on Mills Act, I'd like to see how it might affect this. We haven't done that in the past, in years past traditionally. And I'm curious if you could maybe give us some insight as to why we're seeing that more, the seismic retrofitting, and how that might impact this?
Definitely. So that is somewhat coming out of the collaboration between Definitely. So that is somewhat coming out of the collaboration between staff and a consultant and being more aware of like what's the standard practice in other cities as well. And so that is something that, again, with the goal being not just painting Petunia as aesthetic, but long-term preservation of these properties, that is something that the possibility of home crashing this year from an earthquake is small, but the possibility of an earthquake happening in the next 50 years is certainly possible. And so, again, aiming towards long-term preservation, that's something, that's why staff thinks that that's important to include at some point. As far as the expense and kind of tying it to this, again, every application goes through design review first and then city council. And a large part of what design review, which functions as our cultural heritage subcommittee, does is to assess, here's their expected tax savings and let's look at what their task list looks like. And we certainly have, or the committee has shown flexibility in what types of tasks and what the timeline looks like. And so I think that incorporating both an inspection fee and incorporating seismic retrofit just changes potentially what the timeline looks like on these contracts. But also, that is less of a concern for staff when we are cognizant that now we're going to be looking at needed improvements beyond just the initial 10-year timeline. Because we do not regularly have contracts that come in and non-renew right away and leave the program after 10 years. They generally are in for the, you know, remained, like, we don't have that situation. So if we're incorporating a couple of new items that have additional tasks, those are things that could be considered by staff and the consultant for a longer timeline than just the initial 10 years.
Okay. And we don't see, I don't recall us ever like seeing a form or a checklist that gets reviewed by the planning commission for these Mills Act inspections. So we kind of know everything that is being checked for or asked. So anyway, we might, when we get to discussion, we might want to talk, talk about that as a possibility. Bert?
Yeah, we're looking at a one-size-fits-all here. I mean, we've got anywhere from a bungalow houses to huge houses, and then we've got the commercial. And do you foresee on projects like the Miramar or I think Cafe Fresca was going to do a Mills Act on it?
They did.
That they are going to be more expensive to inspect and maintain and make sure that they're staying up to date on the Mills Act issues? And should there be two tiers? Or had you even considered that?
Sure, good question. You know, I have thought about that because there certainly is a difference even just between residential properties and sizes. And then we have the commercial introduction. There's only one city right now, really, that's distinguishing between those two, and that's Los Angeles. So they are, again, at the higher end of fees. And they do charge an additional fee for properties that have a valuation above a certain point. So I think that they are extra cautious about awarding Mills Act to properties that are really high value. And they do have an additional fee for commercial buildings to participate in the Mills Act. So there, we could emulate Los Angeles, certainly, if that's a direction that we're interested in going. We would just have to establish, you know, like a separate tier. As far as residential, the difficulty there would be, you know, do we do that by square footage, et cetera? We just have to establish a standard metric to do that if we wanted to break it up.
And a question for Mal. We can only charge a fee that represents what our cost is, correct?
Yeah, it's strict cost recovery.
So it would make, it would be appropriate to have two tiers if it was cost recovery for a large commercial.
If a fee, if a fee study establishes that there are differences between those types of properties, then you could do that. It's, again, it's not standard, but you'd have to have a fairly robust fee study to establish that.
Because, I mean, there's a lot that we can inspect ourselves. I mean, the bungalows, you don't need the consultant in a lot of cases to do that. And as far as like the retrofit on seismic and all, that's covered under the building code anyway. That'd be the building inspector checking that one. It wouldn't be planning staff. So that would be a separate fee. Correct?
Yeah, so just as an example, the casino separate of their Mills Act status is going to be doing some foundation stabilization. So they do apply for a permit in that case. And that foundation portion does get inspected by the building inspector once it's completed. But that's for items that require, you know, a building permit. Then there would be a building inspector taking care of that. The portion that wouldn't be taken care of is anything outside of the scope of that. So the building inspector obviously wouldn't be looking at, yeah.
Don?
Yeah, a couple of points and a couple of discussion items. I think in the original concept of the Mills Act, the stack tax savings, the concept was for the owner to take that saving and in fact plow it back into the building. And so you look at some of the residentials, it's where we, there's, you look at the 10-year schedule and if they're getting $7,000 to $10,000 per year, and of course, it's tailors off over 10 years, they're coming a way ahead over what we normally, inspection requires them to do, even though the recent ones, I think, we've gone into the seismic stabilization, which is probably a good deal. But I think, I think we ought to look at the double tier. And where I'm coming from is a lot of the downtown buildings, even though they're not oldies, they meet the 50-year requirement. You've got that Century Modern right there in the corner of Bola Vista. And some of those buildings are starting to really wear out. We've got two we've approved for, to be torn down and rebuilt, two restaurants, Zalv's and the other one down by the Beehive House. So that they're wearing out. But some of the other ones themselves, even though the owner doesn't want to maybe tear it down and renew, they have infrastructure issues with those properties. And where I'm coming from, Michael Kopp, who used to be on the committee here, the commission, owns a couple of buildings down there. And some of those buildings were built during the war effort and you couldn't get steel and you couldn't get aluminum and iron because of the war effort. So they're finding like gas lines are built with some sort of graphite compound. And all of a sudden, they're just after 80 years, they're just dissolving. And so you have a lot of issues down there with some of those buildings. It could go into a Mills Act, but at the same time, have some very severe basic infrastructure issues coming, or starting to percolate up on the street now. And so a point I'm trying to make, I think you made a good point about, we need to really think about the commercial buildings in the older part of town here. We need to think about a more formalized inspection in the same token as you lay in. You know, you probably want some professional inspection of those commercial buildings. And that's where I'm coming from is to take a look at this commercial tier, you know, one step further. Because I know there's some, some property owners downtown that are facing some issues right now. The second point I'm trying to make is we have to...
So let me, forgive me for interrupting you, but we're kind of still in the question phase.
Yeah, I know. Well, the question is, is, okay.
No, if you've got a question, by all means, but I wanted to get public input in, you know, before discussion, so, okay. Question, that's discussion. Okay. Any more questions for staff? Okay, then I will open the public hearing and we do have one card from Larry Culbertson. Larry, I'll ask you to sign your John Hancock to this when you're done talking. No worries.
He usually puts the X down anyway.
Thank you, Larry Culbertson, representing the Historical Society. San Clemente's implementation of the Mills Act, the Historic Property Preservation Agreement, is a great program. It's doing a lot to encourage preservation of our historic resources. The program was not well monitored in the early days. It began, as Jonathan said, in 1997. Owners were given their list of items to do and they were not getting done. Gradually, over the years, planning has increased its scrutiny of the program and it's really paid off. The buildings that are covered by HPPAs are being properly protected. I believe that at least part of the reason the program has lacked enough oversight over the years is that planning has had to expend people hours to do this and it was difficult to show a return. So inspections and enforcement were lax. What planning is doing now, spending city time and hiring outside consultants, is the right thing to do. Our historic resources need and deserve the attention and our citizens expect for the city to properly administer the HPPAs. But it is not fair to expect the citizens to foot the bill for that service. Staff has pointed out, well, the HPPA property owners are saving at least $4,000 to $10,000 per year on their property tax. The majority of this should be going, as Commissioner Brown pointed out, should be going to maintenance of the historic resources. It's not unreasonable to expect for them to pick up $100 per year to help make the program work. The sooner this fee program is implemented, the better. I've heard a lot of good things since the initial presentation said here. The fact that that initial $350 is low, it wouldn't bother me to raise that. It seems reasonable to do that, to make it recovery. Another thing that was not pointed out is the, in addition to requiring the seismic, they're requiring termite reports. That really should be retrospective because there's some of the buildings that have been on the program for 20 years and they haven't bothered to do their termite reports. So we're going to lose those buildings. So it's good the way that you're doing the program, but it could be tightened up. So, thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Seeing no one else, I'll close the public hearing. And Don, did you, we'll go into discussion. Did you have some more you wanted to discuss?
Well, I think, I think we ought to, what's before us tonight is a very simple fee increase. And I think maybe it's time for staff to think, I think Bart brought out the commercial aspects of this and formal inspection there and cost recovery for some of that. And I think we can, I think we have staff out of the $500, you know, five-year inspection that should comply with state law. I'm very comfortable with that, but I really think we ought to, the staff ought to go back and take a look at the application and the basic, basic application fee and staff time fees. I don't know if we want to make it a one-for-one cost recovery, but I certainly think the fees have been in effect since 2008. Certainly, certainly could use a little updating. That's the only point I'm trying to make. In other words, I'm kind of supportive of what staff's come forward with. I think maybe we ought to go a step further and take a look at some of these commercial buildings downtown that are going to start to, start to come on the planning horizon here. They may go for preservation versus total tear-down and renewal.
Zed?
I think, I think the starting point is the tax saving, the tax relief is just true enough for anyone who just acquired a historic structure. Because according to Office of Historical Preservation, they can save 40% to 60% of property tax every year. So I have no problem to fully recover that fee from those applicants. I do want to point out that for long-term homeowners, let's say he, someone owns a property for 20 years, the homeowner may not realize any tax saving by joining the Historic Property Preservation Act. In that case, we probably shouldn't increase that fee. We should continue to subsidize them. They're not joining the program a lot now, so we certainly don't want to raise the threshold for them to join. But for, for anyone who just acquired the property, this fee is nothing comparing to the saving.
Michael?
Yes, thank you. So I can appreciate Fisher Crandall's comment on, you know, the tiering and, you know, for averaging, you know, $1,000 to $1,500 per day and our consultant is hitting three to four properties in a day. I think it'd be fairly easy to figure out what that time is versus a square footage. I think maybe a square footage versus the dollar amount of the property would be the better way to go only because in places like Los Angeles, for example, you could have the same exact house in one part of town and it would be substantially more valuable than in another part of town on the same kind of land, just by way of its zip code. I mean, that's a factor, but certainly in terms of the replacement costs and historic value of the structure, the zip code has less value there, if you will. So I think that, you know, if, you know, we give a recommendation to staff, we should certainly consider that tiering only because there's more time needed for the larger structures. Maybe there's topographic diversity, just your structure size just takes more time, you know, simply. So to have some sort of a tier based on those averages, review times and, you know, what those capacities are for our consultant, I think it'd be rather easy for, for us to come up with some solution that would address that and recoup some of the money that could be lost in review time, just, you know, base fee. But that base fee would cover most, most residential structures in town. But then we have some outliers or some larger commercial properties, structures.
Okay. Bert?
I'm going to actually ask Jonathan a question here. When we're doing a historic Mills Act inspection, we've got a list of items for them to improve and there's a loose schedule of when they have to occur. But then there's the ongoing maintenance, which is a little more discretionary of what's good and what isn't. Does the consultant look at the general maintenance part or just the items that have been listed or, because all of them are relatively easy to do.
Yes.
But they're time-consuming.
Yeah, that is the intent, that initial inspection does cover some of that, right? Like oftentimes, we'll include painting as something that's, that needs to be done. And that may be something that doesn't get included on an initial inspection, but on a recurring one, that may be something that is highlighted as basic property maintenance, that it's time for this property to be painted and that should happen now, not 10 years down the line. So, yeah, I would say that the recurring inspection should capture that.
Okay. And then for discussion purpose, I want to say that Jonathan, when he brings them to design review, has already done a rough estimate of what the tax savings might be. Has put together his list for the 10 years in consideration of what the tax savings would be. And then we also see a rough estimate of time schedule for when they should occur. And we've played with that, you know, what is the most important to get the property stable so it doesn't deteriorate anymore? So a lot of the cost, there's a little more cost sometimes upfront to get the thing so it's not deteriorating anymore. And I want to say he's doing a real good job on that. But it would be nice maybe to, outside of this, consider doing a little more of a checklist or priority list. It's just a standard handout of what you're looking for and what design review's looking for. But I'm all in favor of recuperating the costs of implementing this. And I don't know how we do the tiering on the residential zone, but definitely I think maybe there's a commercial and residential.
Differential?
Differential.
One comment I would make related to that is that traditionally, San Clemente has not done required interior preservation of spaces. You can modify kitchens, et cetera. But staff has raised that in the past specifically with commercial because commercial properties are semi-public, as it were, when you have people regularly into your interior spaces. And so that also could be something that factors into consideration is if we do want to have elements of interior spaces to be reviewed as part of that assessment and any of those inspections, then that also would contribute to where commercial properties do take more time to inspect than residential.
Yeah, really good points, I think, in this conversation. I'm, I do them in favor of the fees. And I don't think that, at this point, I don't think we're discouraging anybody from getting the Mills Act stuff. We've got the cheapest fees around, except for a couple of cities that don't have any fees at all. You know, and I think it's a worthy, you know, a worthy burden to put on people for the savings. I think the commercial fees or a square foot fee, something to make a differentiation, maybe just a two-tier system to start with, as long as we can get a good fee schedule is probably a good idea. Given that they're, you know, bungalow versus the Miramar is going to be different staff time, it seems like, so. I did think that it might be good to have either the DRSC or the planning commission review the checklist that the inspectors are going to use. Along the lines of what you were saying, we should give that obviously to people when they go to apply so they know what to expect. But it might be good... But it might be good for, for us to take a look at. I don't even think we need to do it on a regular annual basis or anything, but periodically every few years or when there's some change in it, just so we can see what's going on ourselves and, you know, make a comment and say, hey, are we catching these things nowadays? We're, we're hearing about something. So that might be a useful thing to run by the Planning Commission from time to time. For things like the, the termite reporting and the seismic retrofitting, particularly seismic retrofitting, I'm just wondering if we really need a structural engineer or someone from the building department to make that determination. This can be, this can end up being the most expensive item that they do. And I know we've put them out like 10 years in the, in the applications I've seen that that's out and says, okay, in 10 years or 20 years, you're going to have to do the seismic retrofitting. But it's still going to be a big cost compared to a lot of the other costs that I've seen. So I'm just wondering if, you know, it's, it could be part of the checklist, but maybe it's, but maybe before we require it, have a professional look at it. I'm just not sure if the historic resource person is the person who can understand enough structurally about that. Maybe I'm wrong, but I think we'd want somebody looking at it who can put a little more, you know, color on it. Like, you know, yeah, you got to get it retrofit, but you're good for 10 years or 20 years or, or not, you know, or you have to do it in three years because you're, you're about to fall down. So that, that might be something we want to consider as well, get the, kind of get the right person looking at that. So, Don, I think you have your head on next?
I want to pull on this termite thing a little bit. I think Larry brought up a good point. Do we require termite annual inspections or is it part of the five-year checklist? The ones, when I've been into design review, I've never seen a termite inspector. Is it in the contract itself? The only thing sure in California is earthquakes and termites and so on.
We, we don't require an annual inspection. At Larry's urging and City Council's concurrence, we are requiring that now as a standard part of the initial application. And, and it would be something that is, so they do have to provide a termite inspection now as part of?
To get into the program.
Yeah, we have done that.
But they don't have to do it annually, they have to do it every five years for the inspection or whatever they have?
And, and that is something that we've indicated that needs to be happening, but we haven't set up a standard timeline for that, for the follow-up inspection.
Or is it in the contract? Is that a good place to put it?
Yeah, it's, it's been within the timeline, but only like once within that initial timeline. So if we want to establish like a regular rhythm of how often those need to be done, then, planning's not opposed to that. We just want to come to concurrence of how regular is appropriate. I will say that, so as an example, there's, the Bartlett Building had some termite issues recently. And so we've tried to address that pretty aggressively, even though that wasn't a part of the Mills Act. But that's, again, to Larry's point, there are, there is a valid reason with the wood construction that's standard in all of these Spanish colonial properties to have a regular review, because a property like that is, they're all liable to these termites. So I think that's a good direction to come up with, a regular rhythm.
No, I, that, I've been in my house, what, 11, 12 years now, and I built it new and I'm right across the street from an oly, but that owner of that oly said, you should really consider it, going into an inspection program, an annual contract with termites. And I do that. In fact, I just got the letter today from Bug Man saying, call us, we've tentatively scheduled this date for your annual inspection. And you pay for it every year, but you have any issues, they come out and they fix it and they don't charge you for it, well, other than you get to tending. And so I have a house that's like 12 years old, new construction, and on three occasions I've had to call them out because little termites will come through the screens and the windows and all that stuff. Next thing you know, you're seeing a little sawdust pile on the floor in your hallway. And so, you know, I've got a house that's not built like an oly with lath and wood and everything else. So it's really behooves us to somehow, I mean, the owner would want to protect his asset anyway, but somehow put in the contract that some reoccurring termite inspection is required. I mean, it's just, I think, since I've been on the commission, some of the, there's a couple of times where people came in, they wanted to modify their oly, but in fact, we allowed them to condemn like the garage because it was too far gone. And Larry's sitting there with his crying towel on and, and the humidity goes up in the room and, and you have, you look at the picture, you look at the site and then the thing is about ready, literally, literally to fall down because the detached garage was, was neglected enough.
Michael?
Yes, thank you. I was just taking a look, Jonathan, at the, and gentlemen, at the, the package here. And, you know, we've got some examples from GPA, you know, the attachment to the inspection sheet. And I don't know what your thoughts are, but, you know, this is, it looks pretty well put together, but there's some critical pieces here that I think are really important that, you know, your construction is not added, is not included here. Square footage of the structure, which would be a great metric to, to monitor over time. We keep record of every inspection, so we have that. Quick reference, and the date of last termite certification, I think would be very important. Mr. Culberson had mentioned that that is one of, sound like one of the primary issues or dangers that these structures face is termite destruction. So those seem to be big elements that, you know, perhaps we could consider making, asking staff to include that as a recommendation in the template that is created for the inspections by our consultant.
Bart?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a clarification on seismic retrofitting. We're not seismic retrofitting the house. We're basically saying we don't want it to slide off the foundation, because most of these have minimal foundation bolting, if any. It's, in a lot of cases, unreinforced foundations. So it's just basically a bracket and bolting onto the foundation so it doesn't slide off if we get a shaker. But don't consider it seismic retrofitting. It's not going that far. It's just a way of protecting it so it doesn't, we don't lose our, our historic resources. No.
Okay, Zen?
Yeah, Jonathan, I've got a question about commercial property. Commercial properties of valuation, being income property, they are valued for their cash flow. Therefore, it is in essence an income approach. When they join the historical preservation agreement, their valuation will change from market approach to income approach, but same their income approach anyway. Do you see much tax saving for them?
As a recent example, OC Fresca was seeing about double what a single residence was seeing in tax savings. So their estimated tax savings was in the range of 16,000 to 18,000 in the first year. And I will say that with the commercial properties, we do also see heavier use, so there are generally longer lists. So in that example, the, the task list, which they largely completed as a part of their renovation, was near half a million dollars. So that's one instance where we're not fully covering the cost of repairs and renovations by tax savings.
Okay. And also, if we were to have self-reporting in combination of a periodic inspection, do you see that approach to save staff time?
I don't see a combination saving staff time, because then we're still trying to track things in the interim, in between the five years. You know, I think that really, one direction or the other, either doing self-reporting, which removes the costs of having a consultant, but then relies somewhat on the, the very detailed honesty of property owners, is, that's the decision that we'd be looking at. I don't think it would save us time to do a combination of the two.
Okay. Now, a question for Mayor. The city is only allowed to recover the cost, but do we consider everything as a program or do it have to be property by property?
Meaning, is the, is the cost recovery?
Cost recovery, for example, if we want to subsid, if we want to continue to subsidize a property owner with very low property base, and we want to give them some incentive, so we say, we'll reduce it, we'll continue to offer you a low fee. At the same time, we charge a higher fee for someone who come in, who just acquired the property, they can see a lot of a tax saving from this agreement, and we charge them a higher fee. And the subsidy to those long-term property owners comes from the higher fee from the recently acquired homeowners. The whole program, it's cost neutral. Is that okay?
And so the question is, can we differentiate between properties based on, well, yeah, I get the question. We'd have to take a look at that. Generally speaking, your fees need to be equal between properties, but because of the Mills Act and how different this is from your typical fee program, there is a possibility of doing that, but I've not seen that done elsewhere. We could, we could look into it. It's, it's not the norm. I'll tell you that.
Well, those costs are, they're the direct costs. We're not talking about the lost property tax coming back to the city, the lost property tax going to the school district. We're not talking about those costs.
Yeah, no, I understand that. The, the issue would be an equal protection challenge, right? So, so property owners being treated differently. And that's, that's going to be the issue to be looked into. There's certainly no loss of property tax of, you know, to the city, but there is a differential treatment, which could be problematic.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Well, our job here is to give some recommendations to Jonathan. I think you've, you know, you've gotten, heard some stuff. I'm going to see if, say, a few points that I caught that we seem to have consensus on as well, so people can stop me if they think I'm wrong. I think that the fees as proposed is good with the commission, but there's also an interest in having staff look into a, maybe a two-tier structure, either commercial versus private or based on square footage, something like that. Does that sound, sound right so far? Possibly a review of the inspection checklist, you know, nothing regular, just some occasional review as things change or, you know, to make sure that we haven't seen something change in the marketplace. Also, a regular termite inspection. I don't know if annually or every three years or whatever is the right thing. We'll let staff come up with recommendations for that. Does anyone feel that I missed anything in that? And I'm sure Jonathan picked up some things as well. Bart?
No, we're just really looking at the fees tonight for a recommendation. You'll go with the fees first and then the checklists are like a staff recommendation, I'm assuming at this point.
They got to go to the council for the?
Exactly. So it's, it's the fees, so that's really what we want to focus on, that he has really clear tonight.
Okay, good. Michael?
No, I'm definitely on board with the, with the sticking to the program fees. The tiered structure, I think, is definitely the way to go in that regard, the other items. Let me ask this, if we do, we do make a recommendation on fees and that box has been checked, these other items that we've discussed, I don't want them to just disappear and not be addressed. How, how would we address these points of concern that Commissioner had?
Yes, I think there's plenty of annexes here. So we address fees within the standard application packet and processing guidelines for staff. So probably when I proceed in the direction of discussing this with council, I can reference that the fee and other minor alterations to procedures within the Mills Act application packet have been addressed, the primary obviously being the fee, but a couple of things, such as termites and regular termite inspections could be included within that as a standard requirement.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Well, we don't have a, a motion to make on this, so really the only question is, is do you have what you need from us?
Yes, I think I do. Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Anything, anyone have anything else to add? Very good. Thank you very much. We will move on to item 9B, Strategic Implementation Program update for fiscal year 2020, 2021.
Yes, good evening, Commissioners. So this update of the city's general plan strategic implementation program for the next fiscal year, the last update was in 2017 with the budget at the time. And since then, the council had directed staff to focus on other activities due to limited staffing. And since then, status updates have been given to the council with the state-required annual progress report on general plan implementation and housing element implementation. So the updates for the prior two years were attached to your report. The focus of this presentation is on the changes that staff's recommending of the program. So first, a review of what this program's all about. It's to ensure that the general plan is dynamic, it evolves, and that through the process of updating the implementation measures, it's a chance to look at priorities and whether those priorities for the community are reflected in the policies and how everything links together and whether there's a need to make changes based upon any policy discussions that the council's having, the community is bringing up at meetings. So it's, to make it so it's a, it's a living document and, so that, that's the primary reason, I think, more than anything else, to evaluate the progress of implementation and to set priorities. And then also, this program is updated with the budget to direct resources towards those So this is a little table that's in your report to identify the status of the SIP on the left column there, IMs existing. That reflects the current SIP and it shows that there's 313 implementation measures. The proposed update would drop that down to 242 implementation measures. And in a minute, I'll explain the, kind of the focus of this update. You're going to see here that we just updated numbers for completed, started, and non-started because the benchmarks in the SIP talk about the number of implementation measures started within certain timeframes. So we broke that out so you have a chance to look at the progress that's being made. This is an example of one of the changes in your packet. There's a variety of different changes that staff is proposing, but this highlights one that I think the, the Planning Commission will have a lot of familiarity with. So the, as you know, the staff has been working on a number of projects related to making our zoning ordinance consistent with the general plan or specific plans, and then working on a local coastal program. Well, to date, there's been one implementation measure for that work. So it just looks like we're, we're continuing our work. It doesn't really reflect all the work that I think that we're doing. And also, it doesn't reflect the phasing of that work program. So if, as you know, we updated the zoning ordinance in one phase, no, actually two phases. And we just updated the pier bowl specific plan. We're now going to be working on the rest of the coastal specific plans. We worked on the coastal land use plan. We're working on the implementation plan and the resiliency plan. But it's all one row right now. Doesn't highlight how things are working together, what we got completed, what our focus is on, and what the priorities are. So there's a number of changes to, to reflect how this work is being done and to show what's been completed. That, that's just one of several examples. I think a good focus, a way to explain a focus of this update is to consolidate. There's a number of implementation measures where there's redundancy and we, we sought to eliminate redundancies. And also to change one-time implementation measures where there's a defined end, where staff actually sees that it's a reoccurring activity, and to change those to ongoing implementation measures. So it doesn't look like we're just not getting it done. We're actually doing things every year on some of these implementation measures, but the way that it was written or categorized didn't reflect what's being done on an annual basis. So rather than go through page by page, staff is suggesting that the commission identify page numbers where there's comments or questions, and I can write those down and then we can go. go to those page numbers. That concludes my presentation.
Okay. Did you want those page numbers right now or when we get, when we're doing discussion?
I would, I would prefer to do it after questions. If you have, actually, if you could give me the page numbers where you have questions or comments and then we can, one by one, go through the page.
All right. Well, why don't we do this? Why don't I go ahead and do the public hearing on this? And then we'll have everyone ask their questions about this with their individual items. Is that all right with everyone?
Yeah, I'd just like to state for the record, like, there's one example he has here. In 2015, the commercial mixed-use zoning districts and zoning map were updated. I remember that was over 800 pages long, that effort.
Yeah.
And just, just to let you know that it was 817 pages or whatever, we did a page turn on back, back in the day. So it was a pretty massive undertaking, so I just thought I'd throw that out there.
But it only gets one line on a spreadsheet, so. All right, public hearing. Larry Culbertson.
Larry Culbertson again, representing the Historical Society. I have a couple of comments and one request for an increase in priority of historic preservation. Put that down. The historic preservation IM 23A on page 16 regarding the Miramar Theater. The Historical Society is very excited and enthusiastic about this item. Working with the new owners of the Miramar Theater is so important. We hope that all the departments help to make this rehabilitation happen sooner rather than later. The second thing, historic preservation IM B on page 14. That's a survey potential historic resources that are not currently listed on the city's list of designated landmarks and historic resources, such as post-war, mid-century, modern, et cetera. And under the notes, it says, "The last comprehensive historic resource survey was completed in 2006." It was my intention to bring that survey here tonight to show it, hold it up and show it, but I forgot to bring it. It's about 100 pages long and it's really gold. It's the best summary of the San Clemente's history and our historic buildings, but it's 15 years old. It's recommended that we extend our periods, in that survey, they recommend that we extend our periods of significance to include mid-century commercial development, 1950's residential development, and several other inclusions that were not acted upon. Some of these resources, not all, need to be recognized and considered for protection. We've raised this issue before repeatedly over the past eight years, but the subject still only gets low priority. So if you could possibly boost that up to medium priority, the planning staff could probably find some state grants and get that, that survey updated, because 15 years is just too old. The third thing, it's a comment, it's a small point, but I think it's important. Historic preservation IM 2 on page 13. Consider nominating properties for inclusion on the national and/or state register of historic places when registration criteria is met. And under the note, it says, "This gives the city additional protection for projects that can adversely affect the status of historic resources." I think it's important to note that the protection of our historic resources, that they're given by the city. We put those resources, those resources on our designated historic, historic resources list. We set development standards for those resources. We establish architectural overlays which control the development. It's my understanding that the state and national designation does not increase the degree of constraint that's placed on those resources. So we must make it easier to obtain finance, they might make it easier to obtain financial help and rehabilitation. So, thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Okay. I'll close the public hearing and why don't we, why don't we try this? Chris would like to get our, kind of a list of our questions beforehand. Maybe you could, we could just kind of go down the row here and let Chris know the one or two or three items that we want to discuss.
I, I kind of looked through all 70 pages of it and I thought, you know, with the consolidation of 70 steps, I thought he did a good job and I really don't have a lot of questions to do on this. He kind of, it takes you down memory lane that a lot of this stuff came from the G-PAC as I thought about it. And pretty soon we got to the point, remember, we were in this contentious thing that we were being accused of changing all their work and there was a lot of politics involved in, and we ended up winning ahead and for you new people and Chris was here, we ended up and put our emphasis on the general plan to make sure it was accurate because what came out of the G-PAC needed a lot of work and they were running in the door saying, "Don't change anything." And then the strategic implementation plan stuff, we kind of held back on because they were, there was, you know, there were certain people in town, "How dare you have french fries in these restaurants and eat healthy?" And so there's a lot of politics in what came through in the strategic implementation plan back then. And it got very emotional and the room was full. And so I think what you've done now is a massive effort. We haven't seen it in a couple of years, but, you know, consolidating over 70 of them, I think, was appropriate. Look at the, the track change, there was repeats on repeats. So I, I don't have any specific ones I want to talk about, then I thought they did a good job as usual and you're detailed what you're, you're famous for. And so I, I kind of applaud your effort to get this thing to try to, more manageable for staff to work on. In fact, maybe you could have gone another bridge or two further, but, but I don't intend to go that far in the detail.
If I can make one, one note, so on any page numbers that you provide, I'm hoping you could give it to me on the track change version so we could look. If you didn't go with that, then I'll take whatever you can give me and I'll figure it out.
Okay. Did you have any specific items? Okay. I'll give you my list and I have this on the final version, not the track change version, so I apologize for that. This is on page four. Item, do you want the IM number 15?
Yes, please.
That one and page 14, item 5B, same item that Larry was, had brought up. And page 21, IM 20. And that's it. Okay. Bart?
I'm good.
Bart's good. Zen, anything for you?
Mobility and complete.
Hey, Gabriel, I have the track change version linked.
First, um, that's for item 14.
Wait, I'm sorry, what was that again?
Page 18.
And that's the clean version or the track change version?
The clean version.
Okay.
There, two, item 14.
Four, number 14, okay.
What are our specific with item?
No, just, we're just listing what, what we want to talk about with staff. So if you've got any other specific items in the plan.
Okay. And another item, the safe routes to school, I, it needs 10 minutes to find out.
Okay. Go ahead and look for that. And Chris, why don't you, do you have a list?
Yeah, I just have a question on the number 12. Council, item 17.
Page, page 12, item 17?
Yep.
I got that safe routes to school, item, that's on my task number two, first depends.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. So let's go through that list and you can take us through it.
Okay. Yeah, if you could give me just a second so I can decode, figure out what pages these Okay. All right. So the first one would be on page one, and that's the mobility 24, crossing out safe routes to schools. And is there a question on that?
Yeah. You said it's a consolidation with, with other items.
Mm-hmm.
Can you show the clean version? Consolidated M1 and 22 and 24. Can you show me the clean version?
The clean, okay. I, I don't have it on the screen, but this shows the changes right here. So when I talk about consolidation, the consolidation is into this M22.
Okay. So as a high priority item, it was to expand the safe routes to school program. We can still complete it.
So the city, the city works on capital improvements through the capital improvement program, annually identify projects, including safe routes to schools. So what we are looking at is later on, I think there's an implementation measure regarding the capital improvement program. That, that covers public improvements in general and that there's a component of that M24 that talks about encouraging schools to get involved and providing public information. So that was lumped into the M22, such as host bicycle, walking safety lessons. Later on in the community development implementation measures, we added one where we consolidated all our public information activities. So that, that's the, that was the intent.
Okay. Well, well, last time we talked about the elementary school and we talked about the safe route to school, we actually made a recommendation to the city council, working into it, possibly to, to continue to build those safe route to school, to have the continued sidewalk along the street.
You took enough work out behind the hospitals.
Right, right. So the capital improvement program may have, I feel that's to remove that from the high priority. I'm not sure if we should have removed that.
So I'll go take a look at the public works implementation measures. There's a number that relate to public improvements and there's some about bicycles. So it, I, I would have to give you some specific examples, but staff looked at the totality of all the implementation measures and saw that there was some overlap on, on items like this. So it may not be specific in, say, safe routes to schools in a particular implementation measure, but it'll say something like implement, implement the bicycle pedestrian master plan, which includes objectives regarding safe routes to schools. So that, that, those are some of the considerations that were given in making the changes.
Those are generic descriptions instead of a specific, you know, long-time project. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anything else on that item? Okay.
Here it goes. Okay. So there's a question on economic development 15?
Yeah, question, maybe a comment. I'm guessing, I know this isn't in the, I don't think this is in, oh, maybe it is, but this is listed as an ongoing task to modify the technology strategic plan. And I know when we were doing the general plan, a lot of this was about, there's money to be saved on licensing fees. We could probably lower the cost and increase the performance of disaster recovery, you know, with modern technology and that's probably more true now than it was then. I don't, I don't follow, I'm not able to follow everything in the city, but I'm guessing that we haven't updated this to look at things like that. Do you know whether or not that's true, that that plan has actually been updated, say, in the last five years?
I don't know for sure. I know that each year that staff is tasked with looking at whether there's a need to make capital improvement or budgetary decisions to modernize and, and I, I think that there's been updating, but I, I can't say if it's been a comprehensive update. So I did consult with our IT manager on this to, to get an understanding of, of whether this was more of a one-time project or of a regular thing. And they had indicated that, that this aligned more with their regular work program when they go through the budgeting cycle. The city, like I just mentioned, with capital improvement type projects, the, the financial services part of this, the, the city seeks input from the IT staff on changes that need to be done based on council direction. And that's looped into decision packages that the council would consider to make changes on technology.
Chairman, this is done every year. We're actually in the process of doing it right now. So IT manager consults with department staff and tries to get our input on the update for that IT strategic plan. So.
Okay.
That's regularly happening.
Okay. Don?
I was going to comment on it. I thought the assistant city manager, that IT thing came under, kind of under the umbrella of assistant city manager and they've been, they were developing and briefing a technology master plan over the last year or so to, you know, increase your, your productivity. So I think it's out there. I don't, what I don't know what you guys are doing, at one time, we had an initiative within planning to, there was a huge amount of stuff out there where you could make things more effective for you people through the counter where people could, at home, see whether they're zoned and where they're at and what's worked in progress. And I think you're trying to do some of that, but there was a hu, huge effort at one time within planning, but then with huge people turnover and the whole thing kind of disappeared. There was some really great ideas out there that were, were going to be implemented. I think they all got stored in the closet somewhere. But I think this city technology plan been under the tutelage of the assistant city manager the last couple of years and the IT manager. I think it's an ongoing thing. Support your statement.
Okay. Anything else on that item?
Yes, since, since we are on this page, I'd like to interject. On item 18, it's being consolidated to number 15. Again, back to that wireless communication master plan. Uh, again, back to that wireless communication master plan. Uh, last, when we talked about a small, small cell ordinance, uh, I think I was told that the wireless master plan was initiated but put on hold. Is that a status?
Yeah, but, um, you know, the city council allocated funding for, uh, update to the wireless master plan. And so the plan is to actually update that master plan this year.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else on that? Okay, next one.
Okay. Urban Design 17. Uh, one of the, Mr. Kuzinski.
Yeah. Can you talk about that a little bit? Um, it says there was, uh, update zoning ordinance to avoid penalizing, uh, commercial developments that include exterior patios, basillos and other similar outdoor areas. How is that, uh, I understand that you need to update the zoning ordinance, but are they still being penalized at the window? Do, do you understand the question?
I, I do. I just need to read the implementation measure to kind of get in the mindset of the question a little bit. Some basillos and other similar outdoor use areas by allowing usable outdoor spaces to be minimum four area ratio. Oh, okay. Thank you for giving me a little time to get back into this one. So there are standards in our mixed-use zones that call for a minimum amount of commercial space. And what this implementation measure is about is giving credit for outdoor spaces, um, to, to go towards that minimum commercial requirements. And we would need to do code changes to accommodate that.
So currently, they're not giving credit for that?
No.
And the city does want to promote the use of exterior patios, basillos and similar patios, right?
Yes.
Is there any way to promote that without going through this medium priority, um, ordinance change?
I, I don't think so becau- oh, I, I think what's, I suggest thinking about the, this program like a budget. Okay? There's a, there's a lot of items in here and there's only so much resources to tackle them. And so it's not so much that this isn't important, it's just, is it urgent and important? And that's kind of what we were looking at when we changed the priority of some of these measures, because there, there's a lot of value in this one. We, we may have differences of opinion on whether it's more urgent or less urgent compared to some, some of us. But we, I think when I was going through these items, I was looking at, is there a state requirement that we need to meet? Like, are all our documents and regulatory compliance? Is there a health and safety issue? Is there some city council directive like this must be done first? That, that rose to high priority. If it wasn't something that was urgent but is important, then that was going to be medium importance, particularly regulatory changes where we want, we wanted to require something or make it very clear that we wanted something done consistently. And then if it was more of a design guideline, uh, that would tended to move towards the low priority. So there was a method to some of these changes.
Well, this is one that I would recommend, uh, going back to the high. I, I see that you had it crossed off from high and you reduced it to medium, just to be able to promote the use of those, uh, outdoor spaces, uh, in our commercial setting.
Okay. Uh, can I get a straw vote on that? Just so I can get a reading from the entire commission?
Let me ask, um, are there currently any mixed-use commercial areas that are kind of suffering from this? Are they trying, has, has anyone come in trying to get something done and they can't, they could get it done if they had this ordinance in place, but because it's not, they can't get it done? Is it blocking anyone right now, I guess is maybe another way of putting it?
I don't know of a, a specific example. I, I don't know of one, but it, that doesn't mean that there can't be one.
Yeah, you know, for me, sometimes we do see, like, we saw the one down on, um, South El Camino Real, that the new mixed-use, you know, that was kind of struggling because we didn't have the zoning in place and they were trying to match the new zoning. But I, I mean, I'm certainly all for the implementation item, but given priorities and the fact that everything is kind of competing for staff resources, if we don't have this as like a, a need right now, and there's other things we do have needs for, um, you know, staff has kind of been balancing and taking other things into account as well as this, um, as much as I'd like to see it, I kind of feel like, unless someone's kind of starting to bang on the door versus the other things that people are banging on the door for, maybe we should keep it at a medium priority for now. And hopefully next year it'll bubble up.
Just a thought, the, um, restaurant reviewed on, um, Del Mar. Down on the?
200 block.
200 block.
Next to the, like?
There's an access that goes between, I think, the parking, um, et cetera, from the back, between the two buildings. That's one that might, um, this might apply to.
But I think they accommodated that.
Well, I think they did. They designed to it, but that would be a, a case where maybe we do have one in the works that it could apply to, so. It probably wouldn't occur prior to that one being completed though, even on high.
And I think that the, the regulatory changes that go beyond, like, needing to meet a state requirement, if, given that we're, we're to update this every year, if the commissioner or staff is seeing that maybe it is more urgent, but we don't have the resources to tackle it, then I think that would be a budgetary item, you know, that we need to do a decision package and the council can consider that. So, uh, I, you know, this is, it's still a relatively new approach for the city to have this strategic implementation program. And, um, so we welcome input on changing, changing it in future cycles too, if you have ideas.
Senator, did you have something you wanted to add?
Uh, yes. You talk about a regu- regulatory requirement, uh, through the consolidation, move some items into ongoing maintenance issue and, you know, downgrade some items and with very few addition or removal. We're able to reduce the number, so, so we're okay with the high priority because everything has been initiated, but we still haven't initiated much of the, many of the, um, medium priority. And therefore, that's not a meeting requirement. Is that, is that right? For all medium priority item, they need to be initiated within five years. And we haven't done that yet.
That was the goal, yeah?
Right, but on your, on your chart, the majority, all high priority now has been started, but the majority of the medium priority haven't.
About half of the, so of the 17 high priority, um, all but two have been started. For medium, there's 33 in the update and then all, and then 22 have not been started. So two-thirds of them.
How, how do we make it a more, more compliant?
More resources to be bought? More resources, more staff?
The whole thing got shoved about three years to the right. Cause right after we, uh, we got the general plan approved and they had this big grandiose plan of all the specific plans, SB 2 hit us in the, with like a hand grenade and the ensuing lawsuits and SB 2, Part 2, 3 and 4. And so everything got sho- when the planning department, along, along with the big personnel turnover, everything in the planning department moved to the right three years, from 2014 to 2017, until we could finally get our housing element approved, which is gonna come up for renewal in about another year, because we got approved so late. And, uh, we all met and we had one night to make decisions because of the lawsuits and they pulled all our permitting capability. It was a really fun time. And it shoved this whole strategic implementation plan to the right three years. I don't think you've ever really, we're really trying to adjust it now for that.
Yeah, I understand.
You know, I'm serious. This place stopped when you could, you had to go back to the judge to say, we have to have at least authority for emergency permits when the sewer lines back up for some, you know, I mean, uh, the shelter coalition really put a stranglehold on this town.
That reason, we don't have a 2019 progress report?
Well, we, we also too, and in the midst of all that, we lost almost all of our planning staff.
I, I understand. And we're probably a little more ambitious than in the past, so we need to make some adjustments.
So I mean, they probably should have re, this is a ma- major rebase line, the first time we've seen it in two years. And this is major when he's re-categorizing, you know, and eliminating, trying to consolidate 70 of them. And he had to go to every staff, every department to get the concurrence to do this. It's not one guy sitting there with a, with a candle in his cube, reeling all this up. And so it's, this is, this has got another step to go, in my view. I mean, he's come a long way, but I think there's still, yeah. And like I say, the politics during the general plan with the, the general plan advisory committee, who thought they were more than just advisory and the stuff they put in and the politics of it, enough.
I, I, I think it's also good to, to emphasize that this is a part of a program, right? So long-range planning also has other things that we're tasked with doing, like the annual progress report, this project, uh, so even maintaining how we track the implement, implementation.
State report coming up here the next month.
Uh, we, uh, right now I'm working on a white paper on leaf floors, to go back to council. We have regulatory things that come up that, that staff is tasked with doing that aren't general plan related. So, um, no, I just want to mention that, that, that.
We appreciate the part three or part four.
Yeah.
And this doesn't include housing, housing event?
Yeah. Which has a, a extra work letter.
Any, any more on that item?
Uh, can I get a, a straw vote on whether to change it to high priority? Just, I, I don't want to misread anything.
Okay, and this is, this is for item IM 17. Just, um, raise your hand if you want to move this from medium to high priority.
Can we wait for the and to, to, to straw vote of all of those things?
Well, no, it's, well, he asked for, the staff has asked for a straw vote. It doesn't, there's no, it's just a straw vote. There's no authority to it, except to, you know, as an information, piece of information. So, uh, everyone raise your hand if you'd like to see this moved. Item IM 17, move from medium to high priority. So, one.
Okay.
So not, uh...
Okay.
Okay, the next item?
There's a question on Historic Preservation 7? Or it's 5B, right? 5B, here we go. Surveying Historic Resources, not on the city's list. This is one of the comments that Larry.
Right. And it's one, it's one I'd identified too. I, um, uh, it's gone down to low priority, um, and, you know, I know, I know Steph, I appreciate that you guys are not just making things higher low priority, that you're balancing everything and you move something up, something, you know, usually needs to get moved down and things like that. But this item is, in fact, we alluded to it in the previous, in our previous discussion too. This is about looking at, partly about looking at, um, places that have become or are eligible to become historic properties, but we haven't done that in a while and looked at those. So we've got, and districts. So we've got mid-century modern buildings, a couple of them on Del Mar, that could be candidates for, um, Mills Act contracts, for instance, to help, you know, maintain those. Pardon me?
Denny's.
Denny's even, right? So I, you know, in terms of historic preservation, it just seems like there's maybe a backlog. Cause I, I don't know that we've, I don't know the last time we've done this, um, but we were talking, even when we were doing the general plan, we were talking about certain buildings and like even maybe those gingerbread houses down in North Beach, which are actually very well maintained. You know, all of those don't have the opportunity for Mills Act or anything like that. It seems like, it seems a little past due to me in terms of, uh, you know, making sure we keep our inventory of historic resources, both current and the opportunity there for people to do things like Mills Act contracts. So I, I prefer to see that go back up to medium. I'd like to see it go up to high, but I think that, that one, that's gonna be, be tough to do, but my preference would be to see that at least go to medium. Is there any comments on that?
I'd support that.
Now, do you want a straw vote?
Well, my preference is that if it's, uh, if it's in the proposed historic district, we probably should do it, um, as soon as possible. But if it's outside, then, you know, with, with the constraint of the budget resource, I'm okay with the proposed priority adjustment.
Well, let me just ask then as a straw vote, if there's no other comments on it. Raise your hand if you'd like to see this move back from low priority to medium priority. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. So that's our recommendation for that.
Well, that means you gotta go to, get it in the SIP program, if you'd like, which here may not happen.
So with grant funding then, you know, we, it, it seems like, um, we could pursue grant funding to do it sooner.
Yeah, 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 that's what we're looking at.
Yeah, just an update on this. We were kind of weighing the historic district, North Beach, and doing the survey, right? Cause that funding is coming from the state and, uh, so the decision was to move forward with the historic district. So there may be an opportunity to apply again next year for the same grant for...
Basically in between or something like that?
Yeah, but, uh, usually, uh, you know, you get more points if you haven't received that grant in a while, and we haven't received a grant from the state in, in a few years, so we'll see how we do next year if we apply for this.
Okay?
So I have a quick question on that. So by medium priority, that means it has to be started within, uh, five years of the general plan adoption, which is February of 2019, this month, right?
That's right.
So that...
Last year.
I mean, last year.
Uh, last year.
Of last year.
Yeah, so.
So it would have been started February of 2019, last year, right?
That's right. So at the time of the, the general plan adoption, these were the benchmarks that were set. And this kind of brings up, uh, a, a comment Commissioner Brown had about revisiting this every year we're to update this. And, um, with the vacancy on the council for some time, uh, we decided not to look at changing format of the, of the program, but focused merely on the implementation measures. So for the next update, we're gonna look at, uh, how we define high priority and low priority and kind of how this is structured a little bit. So, um, we're gonna be looking at some of that, those questions on, on how we, um, you know, the fact that you're bringing up the date and we're past that date, you know, we, it's a good point. So it's something that I think we're gonna need to revisit and how, um, the program is represented. Like one idea we've, we've just, or just started exploring is maybe the flagging items that are active, like, the council has made very clear are high, like, we're doing right now. Like, these are high target things to do next year. We used to have a vital few priority process where there was a board and dots were put on it, something like that, right? Like, these are the... Like these are the five things that we're going to do and we commit to doing those. Something like that. And then maybe the next five out, we'll loop the planning commission into that, but we're just not ready to present any firm recommendations.
Okay, next item?
Trying not to lose track here. Twenty-one. Enter twenty. Okay, there's one on dark skies.
Yeah, you didn't think I was going to let this pass, did you?
I did not.
Look at that, it went from high to medium? How did that happen?
It did storage a couple of years.
Yeah, and I'll make a point about this too. I, you know, I understand probably the reasoning for moving it down. We kind of got halfway into it and we had a staff, you know, big staff hit, you know, kind of had to pull back on it. But council had, I know we have a few different council members now, but council had actually voted to do this, to actually do this implementation item. They specifically made that vote to go and do that. And it seems to me that that counts, you know, that should count in here, that they've actually, on this specific item, told staff, go ahead and do it and that sort of a thing. Maybe you could talk about that a little bit and how it drops to medium priority. I know council hasn't talked about it recently, but in the past, they did vote on this specific item to get it started.
Yeah, I think the thought process is how we're focused on a number of projects right now to meet state requirements so that all our documents are consistent. The local coastal program has been, made very clear to staff that that's a high priority. So it's really making a decision, when would we do this? You know, how would we do this and when would we do this, among other work that we're expected to do? And it, you know, one possibility is that it would be lumped in with some other things, you know, after, we're working on an ordinance to tackle a lot of items that the commission has commented on before, but we haven't been able to get done, called the batch amendment list, where the commission says, hey, we really want you to come back to this and look at cleaning this up. And we maintain a list of all these things that we talk about. And we got council initiation to do that. So we're going to be working on a number of regulatory items that aren't general plan items. So after that batch is done, maybe, maybe it could be explored to put it on the next. But for the time being, you know, we're just not seeing the resources to make it a high priority relative to those other projects.
Well, you just got, the council passed a budget about two weeks ago, which was a budget to go in and do a lot of cleanup items.
Yes, that's the.
That's, you just got approval to do that as part of this due list that you're working with.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry, so this item, there's now budget for this item? Is that what you're saying?
No, I don't think included in that due list. There was a big, they went to council for budget requirement for cleanup of a zoning ordinance cleanup, and they approved it about two weeks ago, right?
Mm-hmm. So this first batch is significantly focused on these cleanups that the planning commission has flagged over time to make our zoning ordinance function. But we haven't really established a second batch list, just starting. And so, you know, if the commission wants to give us some direction on the types of items that they want us to consider as a priority in the future, then, you know, we welcome that sort of input. But I just, I'm mentioning that because in the scope of all the work we're doing, you know, the question was, why did this go from high priority to medium priority? And these are some of the reasons.
Okay, Gabriel?
Yeah, and I was going to say, your recommendations go to city council. So if you think the current council hasn't seen or, you know, heard about the dark sky ordinance recently and, you know, maybe it's a higher priority of theirs as well, it's just hasn't been put in front of them. So you have the opportunity to recommend that and put that back in front of the council.
Okay. Well, I would like to see this high priority for the reasons I talked about, and it's something, you know, that went into our general plan, and people were pretty excited about it when it went in there. Is there an interest in raising this one back to high priority?
Yes, absolutely.
Well, let me, Don?
Well, I just, yeah, I'm torn. I kind of lean towards that because you've already, how far along is the work that got codged? You had a council go do it one time, and you, with Higgleston.
And Michael.
And Michael, and then the staff guy that left and went back.
We actually did the research. We were right at the point where we felt like, okay, we've kind of done our research. Now it's time to actually start writing the ordinance, you know, getting down to that.
Yeah, staff member signed.
We had a staff member sign, and then, yeah, then he left and everybody left and right. So there's nobody to do that work once, you know, we kind of got our ducks in a row, so.
There wasn't much left to do, really, in my opinion. I mean, we were right there.
Yeah, we kind of knew we had the broad brushstrokes there, so, yeah.
Well, going away from an ordinance with the Ts and the Is.
Right, that's true. But we, I mean, we had our direction and we knew where we were going with it. We had a great model.
We are currently enforcing or requesting that projects comply with dark sky standards. Because it's in the general plan. So we're implementing it, but without an ordinance. So I don't know if we're really falling behind in construction or whatever, since it's being required on projects. And there's other things that might be, I'd hate to see something that was life safety or a bigger issue being bumped down because of this one from getting the resources.
Yeah, I wouldn't be in favor of that, but there are areas like, you know, lighting zones, for instance. We're talking about lighting zones and being near habitats and different lighting standards there. And as we approve things, we catch some sometimes, like I think in the Pier Bowl specific plan, we have some things about lighting, you know, not pointing at the ocean, and that's the kind of thing.
Yeah, I'm not discounting it. It is important.
Commissioner Rudi, this item has been combined or consolidated with item 20. Are you suggesting raising item 20 to high or are you suggesting keeping the original item 26, original item 19 alone?
Well, nineteen, the old nineteen and the current 20 are two different things.
Not nineteen.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, right.
And you could see 21 and 25 right here.
It's in 20 now, somehow, somewhere in 20, is it?
Yeah. I, yeah, I think those are parts of a lighting ordinance, a dark skies ordinance. Is that what you, did you combine them with IM 20?
Yes, I consolidated them into one.
Yeah, so I'm fine with the consolidation. That's not a problem.
Well, as I said, you know, when we allocate a priority, I don't feel it's right to do it in the middle of the discussion. Everything has to be considered, you know, relative to other items, considering the constraints of the resource, so.
Well, we're giving our recommendation to city council, right? This is our, you know, when they get this, they're going to also hear from staff that planning commission would like to thought that X, Y, or Z should be a priority. That's what they're.
Okay.
So I was going to call a straw vote, but Don stepped out. But let me just ask briefly, just raise your hand if you think that they should go back to a high priority. One, two, three.
Don.
Three out of five, that's, okay. And I don't know what Don's vote is, so. Well, he's not here now, so a majority of the planning commission.
Do you want to wait for a minute until he gets back?
Yeah, we can go back and ask him his vote. In the meantime, why don't we move on to the next item, just to keep things moving? We'll step back to this after.
That's the last one.
That's the last one? Awesome.
Well, Chris, I add, I mentioned on the clean version was page 18. You have two, item 14.
Okay, yeah, so we should change that to 14A and 14B.
Okay, and in 14A, you said it's a low priority and the color is red.
Oh, yeah, my mistake. Yeah, that should be green or green, yeah. The color's wrong, yeah.
And then on the item 14.
This page, page, excuse me, page 18 of attachment 1A. Okay, I can tell you what that is, just if you give me a second. Okay, well, I'm sorry. Commissioner Rudi?
Same item, item 14, at the end of the description, Paladaos Inclemente. Are we still referring, I'll take that Paladaos Inclemente.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Are we still referring the outlet more as a Paladaos Inclemente? What is Paladaos Inclemente?
Yeah, it's outlets, it's the outlets.
Are we still using the name?
No, we could update that to, the name on the building is different now, so, yeah, sure we can update that.
Don, while you were out, we had a straw vote about the dark skies ordinance to, you know, should we move that back up to high priority? And I want to give you a chance to say whether you thought that should be raised to high priority or not, a or nay.
Bart had cited that many of the projects that come through are subject to building requirements and, you know.
I'm going to apply to a design review. I know it's things we've seen in planning, thanks to certain influences of design review and coming through design, you know, dark sky compliant. I kind of tend toward giving it back up a little bit, note that it was a council go do at one time, and you've gone quite a ways into it. That's not to say that I'm going to staff time to do it, but I guess I could agree with you.
Okay. So that makes it four to two in favor of moving that priority to high, back to high? So you can communicate that to city council.
Do that in break rules, tell us.
I haven't had much time to use it, unfortunately, so.
Okay.
Okay, so you have our recommendations. Do you need anything from us, anything else from us, other than a resolution?
No, I think I can make this change, recommendations to council.
Then do we have a resolution?
Sure.
Motion?
I move we approve resolution number PC 20002, a resolution of the planning commission in the city of San Clemente, California recommending the city council approve general plan strategic implementation program for fiscal year 2020 and 2021 with the changes discussed. I'll second.
Motion by Bart, second by Don. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thanks, Chris.
Well done.
Yeah, great job. Item 11, oh, excuse me. Old business, we don't have any old business. Item 11, reports of commissioners and staff. Does anyone have any reports?
Jason did, but darn, he's not here.
He's not here. I will mention that the, for the next planning commission meeting, I will be absent. I've got a couple of weeks of work travel coming up I have to do, so.
To Wuhan or whatever in China?
It's close, actually. Tokyo is going to be part of it, so.
Be careful.
Yeah. So you'll have Michael to deal with, and he's tough, so. All right, anything else on reports, commissioners and staffs?
Yeah, chairman, I do have an update.
Yes.
So under 11E. But before I talk about that, I just want to mention, yesterday at city council, city council adopted the small cell ordinance, and they did make a modification to the ordinance and standards that the planning commission adopted. And it's specifically that standard for small cells, the distance from residential properties, that that distance, instead of being 100 feet, that'd be expanded to 500 feet. So I just want to give you that update. That was approved yesterday at the first reading.
Okay, that's going to be interesting how they're going to make that work. A lot of exceptions.
It's going to be tough, yeah.
Yes, they're filling out the forms now.
So another update I have is just to kind of let you know, from the planning side of things at city hall, we're trying to make the transition from submission of like paper plans and paper applications to the city and distribution and review to digital format. And so that's, you know, it requires a lot of work to make that happen, and I think we're very close to doing that. So what would that mean? In the future, applicants for projects wouldn't have to actually submit large hard copy plans, and they could actually submit those plans on a thumb drive or a CD-ROM. And so we receive those plans and we distribute it out to the departments, agencies that need to review all this through our existing permitting software. We have the technology already, so it's about trying to utilize it and be smarter about it. So the reason I present this to you today is, is, you know, we do provide hard copy plans to the DRC and the planning commission, and what we'd like to get is input from the planning commission. And also, if you have some questions, you know, let me know what those questions are. You might notice the large sets of plans that we provide to the planning commission, you know, here for the meetings, you know, a lot of times they're pretty large sizes. And I'm not sure how helpful that is, because maybe it makes sense for those plans to be smaller. It really depends on how you use those plans. I don't know how you use those plans, and so I'd like to know if that's effective, if 11 by 17 copies for the future would work better. And because I expect there might be some transition to some smaller plans. Going digital with the submission, they would just submit everything on a thumb drive, but at the planning commission level and the city council level, we would still require some type of hard copy plan to review. So I just wanted to get some feedback if a smaller size would work, if you still like the large size copy. But a lot of that's going to be a preference, and curious to know what your thoughts are.
Well, I would say if we're getting any kind of hard sized copy, you've got to be able to read the dimensions and read the text. I got my architect's rule, and I get it out and start looking at it. And if it's, the scale on the drawing should match whatever scale you're going to print them out at. So we know. I think it's critical for DRC to have that rotated through there. And do you know what format the digitals will be in?
So it'll be in a PDF format.
Okay.
And so my understanding, city council will be moving towards a more digitized agenda in the future, so that's going to be tested with the city council first, and, you know.
Do you go to iPads or something like that, or what?
They would be able to go to iPads, so I'm not sure if iPads will be used. But there is that possibility for that to happen for the planning commission after that's tested with the city council. And so I'm also curious about that too, if the planning commission would be willing to receive the actual planning commission packet, you know, in a digital format and possibly view everything through an iPad. And that might. And that might mean that there's an iPad issued to the planning commission, and that's probably not going to happen this year, but we would have to plan for that.
There was a move to do that about five or six years ago, there was this big public outcry that the city had spent $500 for iPads, for the city council member.
iPads were still pretty new, so, yeah.
Yeah, and so that, and boy, they were, everybody, they, the council backed off and ran from that as fast as they could. People were running in the door, and I think we were going to go, you know, they were marching in the room for us, and this type of book. So before you start making promises to the planning commission, I would say, let's see how, if the council adopts it without a public uproar or some sort of, there was a big deal, they, they ran for that really quick, they were thinking about it, and then they ran.
Yeah, I think if we can save, you know, we, we go through a lot of paper, you know, with our stuff, if we, the first, I don't know, three years, two, three years I was on the planning commission and, and G-PAC, I went off of tablets. I did almost everything off of tablets. So I'm actually okay with it. I think having a lot of paper, of those big printouts is nice, because you, you, you want the detail, but you can zoom in on those, those PDFs, if they're done properly, if they're not just, just, you know, snapshots, but you can zoom in on those.
It's good for the planning, I mean, the city council to have, maybe, reduce size, but for certain functions, particularly DRC, and I don't know, some, many time on a planning commission, we've had 50 people in the room here, and pretty soon, we're all out of, not over there, we're putting it on the wall to really look at something.
We may, we.
The DRC, though, I'm most certain.
I think if, if we do go digital, I would say, at the meeting at DRC, there needs to be a full-size set.
Set there.
And I would say that, the same is true here, so you have to have a full-size, full-size set of paper plans, in case we need to throw them out on a table or something.
With one for the commission, you mean?
Yeah.
With scales to use, it's not always there.
Well, Gabriel, I'm, I'm okay with the half size. In other words, if typical 24 by 36 inch, and if you reduce it to 50%, it has to be at scale, so I can measure something. The most important reason to have paper copy, even at a reduced size, is I can mark up those things. I don't, I don't have that, I don't have the software. I have a little tablet with a stylus, but the screen is too small, and you zoom in and out, you don't get to see the whole picture. You're going to miss a lot of things, so, so if we go to a paper size, I think, before we eliminate them, I'd like to have at least 50% of the scale. So there has to be legend, even with a loop, that's okay. For the magnifier, that's okay, but, but, and also for the digital file, it needs to be full resolution. Most of the time, the, the PDF file is a vector image, so the resolution doesn't matter, it's always clear. Sometimes there's an image, or if someone scans it and puts it in PDF, it's to make sure that the image is clear enough, so we can zoom out and read it.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that's critical for those, for those images, and those PDF files, that they're not just sort of bitmaps that have been put on there, but they are, they're raster, so they, whatever they call it now. So when you zoom in, it, it keeps the clarity, it keeps the proportions, you know, things like that, so that would be critical in using it digitally, so.
Okay.
And I, and I would say, one of the reasons, there's a few reasons, one of the reasons I don't use a tablet anymore is, as I understand it, Attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, but if somebody, for equipment like that, if we use our own equipment, that can be subpoenaed if someone has a, has a lawsuit, you know, against the planning commission or something like that, and they want to look at one thing on, one thing that is a public document that you've put on your private iPad or something like that. So I would want the city to provide it, and, you know, much like we have our email accounts, and that's just, I just do city work.
Excellent point, yeah.
And just, the biggest drawback is architects love to use keynotes, where you zoom in, it says number four.
Yep.
You've got to zoom back out, get over to the key, and then find out number four.
The devils are always in the instructions on the side.
Yeah. There, there should be a way to link that, actually, that might be, might be a requirement that you could do, that those keynotes actually link, link over to the portion of the diagram that reference.
You were asking architects to do that?
How bad you want this dark sky?
So my, my thoughts on it are, it's going that way, many cities are going this direction. It's, that's the reality of it. Many cities also, many cities, right, many cities also have portals they use instead of thumb drive, everything's uploaded, an account is created, and the applicant simply uploads everything, pays the credit card, and then the review happens, and then meetings happen after that. But no, I'm definitely on board with it. I like that for the applicant's ease of application and processing, saves time. But yeah, I agree with, with commission here, I think the paper version is, is super important at this point in time. You know, our mindset, we're, we're still using steering wheels, we don't need them. We need something still, so we do, the next generation maybe not, but right now. The half size, I think is a great way to go, 11 by 17 does get a little small, for the reasons explained, very difficult to get some detail. If that's the case, certain projects warrant that, some of the more simpler projects, like the wireless projects, they can be read, and there's not a whole lot going on. As long as there's a bar scale, that's very, very helpful for, for quick reference and readable, so the dimensions are clearly visible, we can read it in a bar scale, it's easy to, the scale to the, you know, the format of the drawings, you can put your scale, your ruler, your, you know, business card, whatever, and you could pull dimensions real quick and get an idea of what you're looking at. So I'm on board with paper still, you know, I like that, you know, the, for the reason you mentioned with the iPad and all that, and for the reason Bart mentioned, I think we're just not quite there yet. For what we do, we're looking at some granular design elements here, we really need to be able to quickly reference elements on the drawing, and it's, it is hard to zoom in and out on a small, on a small screen, very difficult, so. Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's great feedback, just want to let you know, at, when projects are submitted, you know, we'll start with the digital format, but that's, you know, even just implementing that's going to result in some cost savings and efficiencies for, for the applicant, so.
Yeah, great.
Glad to see it.
One last comment, I guess, you mentioned, you know, last night, the council on the, on the wireless, and I just wanted to personally, or send to Katie, I thought she did an awesome job putting that ordinance together, and the way she built her briefings, and where she tracked comments and what were commented and not, not incorporated, so I personally would like to, to, for you to extend to her, at least I thought she did a very impressive job, and I was surprised, I, I looked at the, the posting this morning of the council deliberations last night, and, and knew about the 500-foot rule, and it's, it'll be interesting how it plays out, but I thought your, your planner you put on the job did a great job, I just want to convey that to you, and you would personally convey that to her also.
I will.
Great, thanks.
Second.
Zen, did you have something? Okay. Anything else for reports of commissioners and staff? If not, we can entertain a motion.
I move we adjourn to the next adjourned regular meeting, the planning commission will be held on February 19th, 2020. At 6:00 PM, the council chamber is located at 100 Avenue at Presidio, St.
Second.
Motion by Don, second by Michael, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously.